Hey, can I call the Milton Common Council meeting to order? And we have confirmation of appropriate being noticed.
Posted on Friday, January twenty eighth at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigley Wiggly in hometown East Hardware.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay. Next pledge of allegiance. And Bill, would you mind leading us through the pledge allegiance?
That's fine. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, next up is public comments. Do you have any public comments this time, or is it just waiting for a certain topic item? Is there anybody in the waiting room?
Just to confirm, there is no one in the waiting room.
Hey, anybody having public comments this time? Okay, we'll move on then. Meeting dedication. Devin, you're up.
Um, so with today being February first, it's the first day of Black History Month. I am going to dedicate the meeting to the poet Langston Hughes, key player in the Harlem Renaissance movement back in the twenties, kind of brought culture or more light into black culture, art, history, and music.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes.
I would move approval of the minutes.
We have a second.
Second.
So Linda, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And be opposed? Okay. Discussion possible action on proposed ordinance four ninety, ordinance three zone three oh five East Madison Avenue from B one to B two.
So Bob Rickenberger, who was with us this evening on, on the call, has went before the plan commission in, I believe, January of this year to talk to the plan commission about his potential acquisition of the property located at three oh five East Madison Avenue. This property is commonly referred to around town as the undercover shop, as that is the business that has been established in that location for, for a number of years. His desire is to purchase the building and reuse the building for an auto body repair shop. In reviewing our zoning ordinances, auto body repair shops are not a permitted or conditional use within the B one zone district. So in order to accommodate that use, the property would need to be rezoned to B two, which does allow for automotive repair and maintenance as a conditional use. So the first step in the process, if the plan commission and council were to agree to this change would be to rezone the property from B one to B two to allow for that use to be requested as a condition. So items number seven and eight are really kind of intrinsically combined. You really can't have one without the other, or at least for, for Bob's intended use. So the plan commission reviewed the rezoning and conditional use permit earlier this evening and approved both of those items unanimously. Please note, though, that even with the approval of the plan commission and the common council, this would still be contingent to approval by the zoning board of appeals for a variance. In the B two zone district, there is a minimum lot size requirement that this lot does not adhere to. So a variance would need to be granted in order for the property to be rezoned to B two irrespective of the use. So the ZBA is not concerned about the use. They're only concerned about the lot size. So the plan commission's responsibility in this, as dictated by state statutes, is to review a rezoning to make sure that it's consistent with established city plans. In the case of this property, our comprehensive plan denotes this parcel as neighborhood, excuse me, as neighborhood business. Bob's intended use would adhere to that comprehensive plan definition. The, again, the only concern is, is right now it is zoned B one, and that would not be permitted or conditional use within that zone district. As discussed at the plan commission level, for folks who may work best, kind of trying to envision something that they're used to, Olin's Auto, for example, is a B two zoned property and is in our comprehensive plan as a neighborhood business. Although the like, although the intended use isn't identical, Olin's is not an auto body. They're more just kind of a maintenance and repair facility. Our zoning ordinances would have those two kind of lumped together irrespective of their proper noun. So as noted, the plan commission reviewed this and forwarded a favorable recommendation to the common council for the, for the approval of ordinance four ninety, which would rezone the property at three oh five East Madison from B one to B two, contingent upon the zoning board of appeals approval of a variance. So that's all I have for item number seven, but I really addressed item number eight as well at the same time. But certainly, once we get to that item, if you have questions for myself or for Bob, we are both available to answer those questions.
Linda, do you have any questions or concerns?
Um, actually, I do. I listened to the plan commission meeting. One of my concerns was the paint and was clear on how the painting was going to be addressed. I, but I would like to know, I'm looking for you. There you are. I, I was wondering, how many vehicles will you be working on at a time? And do you think it's going to be necessary for us to ask you to put fencing around any vehicles that you will be storing?
Absolutely not. Our intention, obviously, the cars that we work on are not common cars for the most part. And most of our vehicles that we have have to be stored inside. They're hundred thousand dollar plus vehicles, upwards of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And if we left something outside and stored it outside, we may no longer be in business. And so what we do is really a very unique business, you know, considered what we do. We are not your typical body shop. We are not your down the street body shop. What we do is very, very specialized and, and very few people get to enjoy what we, what we do. It's very expensive and, and different.
You do have some really cool cars.
No, thank you.
Think we could all agree to that.
Anything else, Linda?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you very much. And I'm really excited that you are looking at another project. Thanks for what you're doing for Milton.
Thank you.
Bill, any questions or concerns?
No questions or concerns, just a, a comment, you know, I've, we had had some work done at the undercover shop and, you know, knew that the gentleman running the undercover shop had been attempting to retire for many years. And I think work he did for us was perhaps some of the very last before he, you know, hung up his spikes. Every time I've driven by past since, I've wondered what in the world can go in there? You know, because it's sort of an odd location. So I'm, I'm actually delighted that we have a, a use that will make a good use of that facility.
Larry, any questions or concerns?
No, I do not. As a plan commission member and as a council member, I have no concerns.
Teresa? You're muted, by the way.
They cut me off. So, no, no questions. Sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Devin?
No questions or concerns. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Motion for anybody?
So just to, before folks get excited about the motion, remember this is an ordinance. So if you do wish to approve this ordinance, the motion could read something to the effect of motion to approve ordinance number four ninety, waiving the second and third reading and adopting if you so choose. But this is an ordinance, so that would be appropriate to read into the motion if that's the motion that you would like to make. If you're looking to approve it this evening.
Thanks for adding that out.
So moved. Second.
That works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay, say everybody pass that. All right. Next up, discussion possible action regarding a conditional use permit request for at three oh five East Madison Avenue.
Again, I kind of addressed this in my previous comments, but now that the rezoning has been approved, it would be appropriate for the council to take action if they so choose on the conditional use permit request, which would allow a conditional use permit to permit the use requested by the applicant. In this case, Mr. Rittenberger for an auto body repair shop. Again, this would be contingent upon the zoning board of appeals approval on Thursday evening at five PM for the variance. That language is already included in the ordinance, so that wouldn't necessarily be needed to be part of your motion. But in this case, I think it would be appropriate to include that in the motion for the condition to use permit if you so choose.
And any questions or concerns?
No, thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
So your motion for anybody? Okay, Linda?
I will make the motion to approve the conditional use permit for three oh five East Madison Avenue contingent on the zoning board of appeals variant for minimum lot size and B two zone district.
Okay, looks like Larry seconded that. Okay, all those in favor of that motion? Any, any opposed? Okay, looks like that passes too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for attending. All right, number nine, discussion and possible action on walk-run LLC DBA Charlotte's Coffee Stop for Class B retail license fermented malt beverage and a Class C retail license wine.
Jenny, did you want to take this one since you're the chief alcohol liaison?
Yes, I will take that. I don't know if I like that, that verbiage though, but okay. So Sharla and David Walker, who are on Zoom meeting tonight, they have applied for a Class B retail license fermented malt beverage and a Class C retail license wine at Charlotte's Coffee Stop at five twenty-five College Street. So staff has completed the background checks and everything has been approved by the police department. There, right now, we do have fourteen Class B retail license fermenting malt beverages within the city and two Class C retail license wine. And that's in, in the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two licensing period. The Charlotte's does qualify for this because they are considered a restaurant. So they have met all of the other regulations in our ordinance regarding liquor licenses. And so we, at this point, are not offering recommendation on it.
Hey, Kay, Linda, you want to start us off again? Any questions or concerns?
You're starting with me tonight all night?
Yeah, it's easiest for me to just keep going down this way. I could go, next time maybe I'll go the opposite direction.
Oh, okay. All right. The only question that I have for the city is have we heard any concerns from anybody that's gotten the notice? And for Sharla and David, do you, what, what are you planning on doing? Could you give us a little bit of little bit of detail? I mean, wine and coffee? Are we doing coffee, wine, or?
I haven't heard of that one. That's a new one. We might have to research that.
No, we're, we're looking at, we've had events at our shop like bridal showers and, and like, we'd like to expand that to like paint night type of thing, or some crafting nights where people partake of alcoholic beverages as well. So we're, we're looking for this to be in more of an advanced thing than, than a regular, hey, come have a beer with your coffee type of thing.
And the city has not received any concerns or comments regarding the application.
Anything else?
No.
Hi, Bill, how about you? Any questions or concerns?
No, then thanks for the clarification. I have the same question that Linda raised. Kind of answers that.
Larry?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Teresa?
No, the clarification does help because my concern had to do with kids around because of the library and Mecca's school kids from the high school, middle school, being right behind you. So, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Devin?
Nothing in addition to what's already been asked.
Okay. I don't have any questions myself either. So my question was already answered or asked and answered. So is there a motion? Larry, is that you raising your hand?
Well, I, I can, yeah, sorry. I, I make the motion to approve the Glass B and the Class C wine licenses for Sharla Restaurant.
Second. Looks like Linda had her hands up first.
Okay.
Hey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Be opposed? Okay, there you go. Got your license.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're doing some nice stuff up there.
Thank you.
Number ten, discussion of possible action, resolution twenty-two dash oh four and resolution twenty-two dash oh five regarding a sale of land located at twelve seventeen East High Street to Clapper Properties LLC.
So the city received an offer to purchase from Clapper Properties LLC to purchase the subject site at twelve seventeen East High Street, which for those who may not be familiar, is a small one point one acre parcel on the southwest or south, yeah, southwest corner of Gateway Drive and East High Street, right across the street from Charter Next Generations facility and kind of behind the QuickTrip. This is a small site that is owned by the city and has been owned by the city for some time, longer than I've been here. But this is a, it's a unique parcel that is oftentimes too small to be constructed on. But in this case, it seemed to be a perfect fit for Mr. Clapper to, who intends to purchase the site, if, if he is to purchase the site, to construct a ten thousand square foot facility, which will be kind of an automotive warehouse slash retail facility, similar to what was located right next to City Hall for a while. If he does move forward with his development plans, obviously, he will need to go through the proper approval process with the site plan. But at this time, we just have the offer to purchase that we are responding to. This is located within a TIF, but TIF six has passed its expenditure period, and Mr. Clapper did not request any TIF assistance either. So the purchase price of thirty-five thousand dollars is the going price for acreage of land within the TIF district. So he is paying a commensurate price for the value of land that we have on the open market. And that would be the fiscal impact for the city. So there would be land proceeds as well as returning this longstanding kind of exempt parcel to the tax rolls. Resolution two thousand twenty-two oh four authorizes the acceptance of the offer to purchase. And resolution two thousand twenty-two oh five authorizes signatures on the closing documents for the subject property sale at the time that closing is established, which we have not done at this point. So you can address both of those resolutions in one motion, or if you choose, you could separate those two resolutions out into separate motions. It's totally at your discretion. But city staff would be in support of both resolutions and seeing this property return to active use in the city of Milton.
Hey, Devin, this time we'll start with you. Any questions or concerns?
I don't have anything, no.
Hey, Larry?
Um, no concerns, just would prefer if we did treat each, each resolution separately just for transparency, et cetera. So.
Bill?
Uh, just a, a question. Was this the parcel that was going to be developed as the swim facility?
That is correct. Same parcel. Yep, yep. We talked about that at the plant commission level as well. That project came forward in late two thousand and nineteen and unfortunately just never came to fruition. So the offer to purchase and subsequent development agreement and site plan have since expired. I haven't heard anything from those folks for quite some time. So the property's back on the market and Mr. Clapper is willing to purchase.
Thank you.
Teresa?
No questions.
Linda?
I was, I just have a question about the property. Is, is that area there, that intersection, do we have curb and gutter on that, or is that still a gravel?
Yeah, I believe it's gravel shoulders on the north side and curb and gutter on the east side of that parcel.
Okay, all right. I was just wondering. No, I don't have any questions. I think it's a good idea. Nice for them to want to come to Milton.
Okay, want to make a motion? They want to make a motion for this? Nobody raised their hand, so.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-two oh four in keeping with Larry's desire to split these out.
Second.
There you go. We have a motion and a second approval of twenty, a resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash oh four. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Be opposed? Okay, that passes.
I would now move approval of resolution twenty-two oh five.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Okay, that one passes as well. Next up, number eleven, discussion possible action regarding replacement of biosolage transfer pump at the wastewater treatment plant.
So this is a pump that is used at the treatment plant for the sludge, basically, in the processing of that. The pump that's currently there is part of the original installation, actually, or very shortly thereafter. So it's very old. It still does function. We've been having more and more problems. There's actually two of them that can be used alternate, alternately, so. But they are old and starting to, you know, exhibit some symptoms of their age. We'd like to replace just one for now, and doing so would provide us the operational improvements that we're looking for and would need and benefit the plant and also allow us potentially to use some other storage methods to hopefully eliminate the need for, or not eliminate, but prolong the need for additional biosolage storage at a future point down the road. We received one quote for the pump. That's a little bit more of a specialty item, so it's not something that we can get off the shelves. The supplier that we reached out to is a supplier we work with for many items at the treatment plant. And we reached out to a few contractors and did get two quotes back. They're attached here to the memo. Would look to purchase the pump from Moké Shaw for sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-seven ninety, and we'd look to have Sabal Mechanical perform the installation for approximately ten thousand nine seventeen. Again, those are quotes, so the actual numbers may be a little bit different on the installation. But looking for approval to replace that pump.
Hey, Teresa, do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, Bill?
No questions.
Linda?
Um, I was just wondering, Mark, was that, was this the pump that we had, that was referenced in the capital budget for twenty-three?
Um.
Because this one in here is like eighty.
There is, the Ras pumps, that's a different item.
Yes.
The Ras pumps, yes. And that's, that'll be forthcoming as part of a larger wastewater treatment plant project, but we're still trying to define what the exact scope of that project is.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Larry, do you have any?
Just a quick one. I, the second pump, Mark, any thoughts on when that might need to be replaced, or would we maybe not replace it at some point if we?
Um, we would probably look to replace it. Being that it could be used as a backup pump, as long as we maintain it and it does function, the urgency wouldn't be, you know, as necessary. But we don't want to be in a situation where both pumps are seventy, eighty, a hundred years old and the original plant was built sometime in the twenties or thirties. So yeah, the components in some of the areas are, are pretty old yet.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Devin?
No questions.
Okay. You may want to make a motion at all?
I can. Go, go ahead, Teresa. Uh, I'll move the replacement of the biosolage tran, transfer pump.
Second.
Yeah, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Nope, that carries. Right, number twelve, update discussion on Story Gardens to the Milton Public Library.
Okay, I am going to share my screen if I can find the right thing here. Just a moment. There we go. Can y'all see that?
Yep.
Great. So Ashley and I are going to do a brief update, I guess, on the Story Gardens project at the library. We were at right now, what we're planning for two thousand twenty-two, and then just see if you have any questions or anything. Just wanted to thank the council quick for giving us this opportunity to update you on this project, but also thank the community for really starting to embrace this project and supporting it as well. So first thing, for those who aren't familiar with the project, the mission is to educate and enrich the community through exploration in an outdoor garden. Story Gardens is an open air branch of the library that promotes literacy and lifelong learning through its literature-based themes and outdoor library programs. I think that the key here is that it's an open air branch of the library. It's going to be an extension of the services that they already provide in an outdoor space, and it's going to be a beautiful area for our community members to learn more about the outdoors, horticulture, all of those different topics that the library is able to offer. And we have five goals that we, for the space as well. Of course, we want to establish some beautiful gardens for people to enjoy and learn more about. But we also want to have some art pieces that are going to really capture the viewer's imagination, as our goal says. We also want to provide some different programming through the library and have this be a recreational space for people to enjoy. Gardening is a recreational activity, so we'd love to provide the opportunity to our community members who maybe don't have that access to that in their backyards, or they just want to learn more about it before they tackle it in their backyards. We also want to cultivate a love for the outdoors in our community. We have such great natural resources around our community that this is a natural place for them to learn about the outdoors and really start to appreciate it. We also want to make sure that this is, the space is as accessible as possible for people with all abilities. This is the overall site plan that we have right now for the Story Garden space. This may fluctuate as we start to add pieces to it. The main pieces are this outdoor programming space that is really the central focus of the, of Story Gardens and being able to provide that programming piece from the library. We have this entrance ramp right here, and we'll have a perimeter walkway all the way around that will provide access to the different spaces within Story Gardens. We're going to be adding these chess tables in right here. We're going to add in some shade, probably some shade trees, and then a beautiful art piece is going to be added to that area as well. There's going to be an entrance archway that's going to be put on this south end by the ramp. And those are really the key projects for two thousand twenty-two. And then, once we have all those key pieces in place, then we'll be able to look at the space again and evaluate what, what area to tackle next, and if all of these different ideas still make sense, or if we need to make adjustments or anything like that. Ashley, did you have anything you wanted to add to that at all?
Nope, just that we want to get these main pieces done first, and like you said, we'll look at the space and see what else we can work with concerning like funding, space wise. We have many other ideas we are hoping to implement, but the main ones that we want to get done for this year.
So this is a picture that I found of the space from twenty- So this is a picture that I found of the space from twenty thirteen and I really just wanted to show it to the group. Um, you can see there are these beautiful shade trees really creating this wonderful oasis right by the library between. The library and the Milton School District offices. Um, a- and unfortunately in twenty sixteen, that's when a lot of these trees were taken away because of the Emerald Ash Borer. So we really want to create a beautiful space again in this area, bring some of those trees back, that shade component. But also some educational learning activities as well. So this is. Um, where we're at right now. You can see we have the, the ramp going down into the space. You can see one of the mosaic pieces here. And really, the whole landscape of this area has changed within the last um. Just, just less than ten years, really. And Ashley's going to talk a little bit more about some of the outdoor progress we've made.
Yeah, so a lot of the work done for Story Garden so far has been kind of behind the scenes. Um, not much that our patrons, the community, community can see outside, but there was some work done. We had that two ramps installed, one on the north end and one on the south end to make the space accessible because it was only accessible by stairs. Um, from the front parking lot and the back parking lot. And then the walkway will connect those two ramps eventually. And then we had the old rock wall that was part of the Milton College landscape. That was removed just because it was kind of crumbling and falling apart. We saw it as a safety hazard. So um, Silla and Sons came in and kind of graded out that space. We did keep some of those rocks that we will incorporate and Story Gardens. In some way, um, but that was, work was done the last two years, I believe. A lot of this work was in kind or they kind of gave us a discount on. The labor and materials. Um, one thing that we have had visible in the gardens that have, I really enjoyed is our pollinator garden. So that's right next to the library on the side. Um, we, this is the second year, this year will be the third year of our pollinator garden. We are looking to expand it a little bit more too, to bring in more color, bring in more pollinators to support those bees and those butterflies. And speaking of bees and butterflies, we do have these amazing um art pieces, um mosaics created by Heather Hanson. She did the monarch. And then Connie Beer created the bee for us. So those pieces are in the gardens um when it's in bloom.
And just quick, if you're familiar with the back parking lot at the library, there's some tiered garden beds, I guess you'd call them. That's where we're going to be expanding that pollinator garden to in the spring this year. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the raised garden beds. These were constructed by the Milton Lions Club and the um, the cost for the materials that was covered by a few different. Grants and funding sources that we had. The Lions Club has dedicated two thousand dollars towards this project, but. The construction materials, that's not part of it, that's going to be a separate donation. Um, the club had a great time back in March of twenty-twenty constructing these just before the pandemic hit. And so we're really happy to be able to get that work in before things kind of went a little, little crazy for us. So we're excited to likely build two more. Um, I'm a member of the Milton Lions Club, so when I say we. I, I'm talking about the Milton Lions Club. Um, so we built six of them and will likely build two more to create eight total raised garden beds for the space.
And Barbara and David Benlin have been huge help in the two garden beds that we have out right now. They're the ones that let, let us know what kind of flowers to put in there. They help us maintain them. So big shout out to David and Barbara Benlin.
Yes, definitely. And um, one of them is all annuals and the other one's all perennials right now. So fundraising.
Yeah, so like I said, behind the scenes, we did a lot of fundraising um in twenty-twenty-one. One of the big ones we did was pennies for the pathway and another shout out to Sarah Stuki. This was her, her idea. I mean, it was all the elementary schools and they did a penny wars for us. Jamie and Marika created a amazing music video that if you haven't seen it yet, I highly recommend you take a look at that. Um, but through the pennies for the pathway fundraiser, um, seven thousand three hundred dollars was raised. And we were able to pay the principals and all the participating schools. Another campaign we did was one hundred women. So we had great success with our one hundred women, women campaign with our library renovation. So we wanted to carry forward with that success again. Again, this is another Sarah Stuki idea. Um, but we, our goal was to have one hundred women pledging three hundred dollars each as a one-time payment for the Story Gardens. And then they would be recognized in a special way in the gardens. At this time, we have forty-seven women, which has raised over fifteen thousand dollars.
And another thing that we have been doing are some smaller fundraising opportunities. Um, one of those is an apparel sale. Mainly to raise awareness for Story Gardens, but also who doesn't want a really sweet T-shirt, the one that Ashley is wearing tonight. Um, we'll probably do another sale at some point in the future, so be sure to watch for that. We also have greeting cards available for sale. There's a set of five that are available that. Feature the artwork of Angela Brooks, one of the staff members at the library. And there's also another set that features the artwork of students in the Milton School District. There are also coffee mugs available right now with Angela's artwork on them and um, looking at doing some other bundling with those mugs later in the year. So really trying to look at some creative, different ways to raise some funds for the, for the project.
Um, I love talking about this one. So one of the grants we received was from the Green Bay Packers Foundation. It was a five thousand dollar grant. That is going towards those concrete chess tables that we are hoping to install in the spring. Um, this is a picture of Inga and I with Leroy Butler. That was a very exciting grant. We got to go up to Lambeau Field for that one. Another one we, another one we received.
Deserved.
Oh, thank you. Another one we received was a five thousand dollar grant from the Steve Stricker American Family Insurance Foundation. And this money is going towards the purchase of the story walk stations that will go around the pathway. So there's going to be eighteen stations that will allow us to break up a picture book. And so um, participants, community members, patrons can walk the pathway and read a story. And we'll also feature art. We'll do an art walk, so we'll feature art in those. We'll use them to feature information for any programming that we do outside. Um, so this is one of the main things I definitely wanted with our Story Gardens was to have story walk, permanent story walk stations.
Some other funding that we received from the Wisconsin Arts Board, we received a grant for four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars from them and also the Milton Fund for two thousand dollars. These funds are going to go towards the entrance archway. It's being created by Brady Lewick. He's a regional artist. You can see some of his work in Fort Atkinson. I believe he has a piece by Jones Dairy Farm and then there's um, a few on the Glacial River Trail as well, the bike trail. Um, we're excited to be working with him on this project. Um, you can see it's going to be two trees intertwined and these beautiful um. Metal painted birds as well, featuring Story Gardens with the logo. The brickwork you can see on the pillars, those are going to be bricks from the library's renovation project. Um, likely intermingling some of the new bricks and the old bricks that are left over um, to tie it back to the building as well. And that will likely be done in May. So we're looking at a May installation for that, that piece of artwork. Then we also received a grant from the Baderman Foundation. This is through the Space Saver Group in, in Fort Atkinson. And this was for ten thousand dollars. We're going to put that towards the outdoor programming space. Um, outdoor programming space is such an important piece of this project. It's the focal point and really everything is going to center around that space. So we're, we're excited to have this funding available to us and we're also excited that the Milton Library Foundation is also going to be contributing to this project as well. Um, these are a few other funding sources that we've had over the years that we're putting to use as well. Anything else on fundraising, Ashley?
Uh, no, come buy some coffee mugs.
Yeah.
And bags. So besides, yeah, so besides those, we also came across the opportunity to purchase these very hungry caterpillar. Story walk pieces that were at Rotary Gardens. So um, they had an amazing story walk. Over the summer and they were unable to store these pieces. And they were, we kind of had a connection and we purchased the fruit pieces that we will, once we have the um, gazebo installed in the walkway. We'll kind of figure out where we want to put these pieces, but obviously they fit perfectly into our gardens. And then we have another art piece coming. So this is going to be called Twisted. We are working with an artist, Amy Leonard, and she's part of Project Maria. Um, Project Maria is a local organization that's um. Provides information on eating disorders and mental health. Um, it's, was created in memory of a teen girl named Maria Dorn. Maria, I, Maria used to come to the library a lot, so it's kind of very close to my heart. Um. Amy is going to be creating this piece um on site and they are donating the materials and the work. So it's going to be, if you read the description of what this is going to kind of represent, um, we are very excited to have this in our gardens.
And I think just having her actually creating the piece on site is going to be an amazing opportunity. For our community members to see what goes into creating this type of art piece. And we're going to look at trying to document it with video and photos and interviews just to um, you know, bring a little bit more education to our community in a different way.
So why are we really doing this whole project? Because the library, we are all about doing programming and we want to use some more space and we want to have more fun. So we're going to build this and then we're going to use it, of course. So. We have tons of things in mind. Staff have been, we've been thinking about this since, what, Inga, two thousand seventeen, since the construction really. Ended with the library. So we're thinking about what's the next thing we can do. So we've been thinking about this for years. Um, how we want to use the space is with like hands-on demonstrations and presentations. We already had David Bellin here talking about owls. Um, we want to have family entertainment, of course, with the gazebo, musical acts, theater performances, lots of outdoor fun. Passive programs for self-exploration. So we're thinking about doing some scavenger hunts out there where people can just kind of walk the gardens, find little things, learn as they go. Of course, the story walk, the chess tables will always be available. Um, and then like the seating area, of course, people just come and enjoy the space. Um, steam and stem programs are big with, for us. You have the library, we have our maker space. Now we're able to bring our maker space outside. And of course, there's going to be volunteer opportunities for youth and for adults to do programming to help us maintain the space. That's going to be a big thing is actually maintaining the space. So we definitely have, we already have people reaching out to us, asking us how they can help us with the garden aspect of it. So it's going to be a great space where people can be a part of, to contribute to, um, and enjoy. And then, see, this is a list of programming that we already have in mind of what we want to do. Of course, this is just the start. Once we get going, we'll always, we'll be thinking of more and more to do.
And this kind of just brings us to twenty-twenty-two. So these are kind of the key projects that we're looking at completing. We're still working on raising funds to complete some of those. The outdoor programming space, we're fortunate enough to be working with Sackness Builders right now. On um, you know, utilizing their expertise to figure out how we're going to be able to build it. See if there's volunteers available that can help us construct it. Um, they're working with us to get price quotes for materials, all of that. And we're super appreciative of their, their assistance with this project. So again, the outdoor programming space is the key focal point and we're still working out. Uh, potential costs for that. Um, and then the, the pathway is another piece as well. That's going to be important to be able to. Create access to all the different components of, of Story Gardens. Ashley, I don't know if you had anything else to add to that, but.
Nope, not really. We're just hoping once spring call comes and the ground thaws that we're able to kind of hit the ground running, especially with the. Um, gazebo and like Inga said, big shout out to Sackness Builders and Aaron and John over there for helping us. Kind of figure out what we need to do to get this going. And we, I know Mark has talked with them as well with engineering aspects. Oh, that's a big thing.
So I don't know if anyone else has any questions. I'm going to stop the, the share so I can see everybody again.
Yeah, let's just go run the group again, I guess. Larry, do you have any questions? You're muted, by the way.
No, I don't have any questions. Uh, I've been uh, I've been part of the Story Gardens pro, group for a while. Uh, haven't been to every meeting, but I've been there when I could. And they've been gracious enough to allow me to give them input, so. It, it's very exciting. And uh, one of the thoughts I had is maybe we'll even have a chess tournament or two.
You bet. Yeah.
My son will jump on that.
We've had several people reach out and said they're very excited about the chess tables, once we announce that.
Teresa?
Uh, no questions. Thanks for all the, the work.
Bill?
I just think it's remarkable and amazing that uh, uh, what is coming together. Uh, you know, there was always talk about that space when we were doing the building and we had very, very small ideas. Uh, but the idea was always um, this wonderful outdoor asset and uh. You know, how to make the building uh spill out into that uh area. This, this, this is just great.
Linda?
Oh, I just, I, I think that this is wonderful. I think it looks great. And I also. I, I definitely want to point out all of the community members that have been a part of this project because. There's just been people coming to offer assistance and it just, it's wonderful and it just goes to show. Everything about Milton and exactly what we're doing with our library.
Devin?
Everything looks great. Thank you to everyone for their hard work on those.
I think it would, it's a wonderful thing to be happening and I thank you guys, both of you for your really good presentation. Okay, we want to, number thirteen, general items, committee reports. They have any committee reports? Teresa, it looks like you may have one.
No, I was trying to think of, I was trying to think of what I said last time about um, the gathering place that. Um, but we did meet again regarding the project in the back that everything is finalized and we have set up a. Uh, we haven't finalized the date, but in the fall, there will be a uh, celebration because it is the, the thirtieth year. Of the gathering place, so there will be an anniversary uh, get-together. And during that get-together, we'll be celebrating hopefully the completion of the project. So looking forward to that. That's about it.
Anybody else have any committee reports? Linda, go ahead.
Um, we did have a fire commission meeting today and the Milton Township and City of Milton Fire Commission. Did purchase one ambulance.
Good news.
Um, just quick, Historic Preservation Commission will not be meeting tomorrow. Um, but I will be meeting with a work group for the interpretive sign project. We'll be going over some preliminary designs for that. Um, Story Gardens is going to be meeting on the fourteenth at five fifteen. That'll be a virtual meeting if anyone wants to attend. Um, but if anyone has any good fundraising ideas, let me know before that meeting so we can talk about them.
Thanks, Inga. Hi, staff reports. And Ashley, I think we'll start with you since, and see if there's anything else you have to add beyond the story of the gardens part.
Lots of story, story garden stuff. Um, we do have a book sale this weekend only, Saturday and Sunday during library hours. It's for my Red Cross Youth Club, so they are doing a, a little fundraiser. So that's ten to four on Saturday, one to four on Sunday. Um, tomorrow we have a practicum student starting from UW Whitewater. She is going to learn the ins and outs of the library. So what better library than our library to learn that at? Um, and then, yeah, we are, are starting to think about summer programming here already. So.
Inga, do you have anything? Okay, Jenny?
I have a few things. So the election official training that was held at Milton City Hall of, on January nineteenth was successful. We had twenty-two attendees, including staff, and then we also had a couple from other communities, which was a really great opportunity for people to meet each other. And then right now I'm working on setting up a open book and border review. This year we are looking at having it either the first or second week in May. And then we have a lot of rentals coming in for city parks. The only one that is kind of interesting, we have a lot of availability open in June. Um, so that will be interesting to see how quickly they do. Uh, fill up, especially since a lot of graduation parties were for last year. So if anyone is interested in that. Um, and then we're starting to talk about special event permits um, for this year and we've had some discussions uh with. Like example is the farmer's market and so that hopefully we'll be having some approvals for those in the future.
Very nice. Kelsey?
Don't have any updates tonight.
Can, can I jump in quick? I did have one thing.
Sure.
Um, I did post for the seasonal crew for some. Um, I did post for the seasonal crew person position for Public Works. We're hiring up to three people for that position, so if you know anyone that's interested, um, please make sure to direct them to the website to fill out the application.
It's going dead. Chief?
Uh, I don't have much either, about the only thing that, um, I guess I can report out on our human trafficking, um, meeting that we had or, uh, community panel. It wasn't as highly attended as I would have thought, but it was our first one in person in a very long time. And frankly, we all felt a little rusty anyway, so, um, I'd like to get another one back here at some point when folks are more comfortable getting together, and it'll be a topic that I'll continue to work on.
Nice. Hopefully, next time it'll be twice as many people.
I'm hoping so. It's also memorialized on YouTube, um, so people can always go and check it out there too.
Yeah, we, we did record it, so if anyone wants to watch it, feel free to go to our YouTube channel.
Great.
Mark Langer?
Um, I don't have a whole lot. Little chance of snow tonight. I know that's the weather report, but, uh, otherwise.
Al?
Uh, Linda gave the update about the fire commission meeting today. Um, you know, fire has been the, the topic of conversation for most of the time. Uh, we've also had a lot of conversations, uh, in the last few days regarding COVID. Uh, you know, it still continues to be a major issue, especially in our region, and, uh, you know, how we can work with our staff to protect each other and, and maintain continuity and service provisions. Uh, we do have interviews on Thursday of this week, uh, for the part-time administrative assistant position that will be shared between the city hall, uh, staff and public works. Um, and there was one other big thing I was going to mention, and now I'm blanking on it.
I don't know if this was it, but we have second interviews for the project coordinator position too, for the.
That was not it, yeah, but, yeah.
Related to the drug-free communities grant that was awarded to the, the city.
Yeah, and, uh, that, I, I know now Jenny, Mark Langer, myself, and Attorney Schrader, uh, have started working on some pretty substantial ordinance revisions. Uh, some of them have, has been a result of staffing changes and, and, uh, you know, the, uh, building inspector changes. But other ones have just kind of been long overdue, trying to clean things up. Um, Jenny is very good at, uh, finding that stuff, and so is Mark, so we've got two, uh, individuals that are right on top of that. So again, as Chief Mark Ward always talks about, we're trying to match, uh, practice with policy or policy with practice. So, uh, you'll be seeing those coming forward probably in the spring or early summer, uh, but there'll be some, uh, potentially some substantive changes. More, more so in a quantity fashion, not in a, in a, in a, uh, you know, a change in how we do business, so. Uh, but those are kind of the big three things that are on our table right now, and, uh, other than that, um, you know, business as usual. It was forty-six degrees today, so nineteen tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Hi, our next meeting date is February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Bill seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay, we're adjourned.
Hey, great job tonight, Ryan. Great job.
Thanks for coming, Eric.
Thanks for the presentation on Story Gardens.
It felt a little hot to run it.
Great job.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Bye.
Night, all.